It shall be prohibited. This standard will apply as to its effect not only to neighboring properties, but to other occupied or unoccupied tenant space. In the final sound studies response, what Langen said was the following. It basically said, well, these streets experienced traffic from various kinds of vehicles, and there were no reported vibration issues. Thus, it can be reasoned that if vibrations from existing school buses, packed buses, passenger vehicle, garbage truck, et cetera, are currently assumed acceptable within 50 feet, then vibrations from onsite traffic located more than twice the distance away should also be acceptable and should not be detected without instrumentation. I used to live in Highland Park, and I lived across the street from a church. And occasionally, a milk truck would come to the church, and he would idle across the street from my house. And there was a kind of weird frequency phenomenon whereby my entire house would vibrate to the frequency of the idling. And that woke me up. And usually, what happened is it lasted for a minute or two, and then I would fall back asleep, and he would drive off. And it didn't happen very often. But I didn't report that to anybody. There were definitely detectable vibrations. They were actually quite strong, and they would wake me up. But I didn't report it to anybody. So I am confused about how it is the fact that nobody had reported vibrations means that there aren't any vibrations that people can feel. It's not even clear to me who one would report vibrations to or who they asked, whether anybody had reported vibrations to them. Note, they describe no attempt to go out and determine if the vibrations could be detected without instruments, which seems like a fairly simple thing that one can do since you wouldn't need any instruments. They didn't say that they interviewed residents to see if they could detect vibrations without instruments, and they didn't ask them whether they objected to the current vibrations. They don't consider the fact that, as in the case that I had in Highland Park, the fact that I didn't complain to anybody about vibrations that I felt once a month for a couple of minutes, I might have a pretty different feeling about if I were to experience that multiple times an hour for 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So this vibration report, well, I won't call it a report. This reply to the question about vibrations seems to me to be completely lacking. There is no scientific evidence of any kind that if vibrations have not been reported to, I don't know who, that therefore that vibrations are not detectable. The last issue I wish to consider is the sewage issue. And I'm basically here, I'm simply concerned that I don't know what the plan is for dealing with the sewage. The Langen Engineering Report states that the proposed project provides an eight-inch sanitary sewer connection to the existing eight-inch sanitary sewer in Beulah Road, ultimately conveying sewage flows to the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority Waste Water Treatment Facility in Pittsburgh. This is a copy of the letter that is included in the same set of documents, which is a letter from Alkasan to, about the Churchill Creek Project. And the part that I've highlighted in yellow says, "No capacity determination can be granted for any expansion at this time, since the extent of the development is unknown. This interceptor has sufficient dry weather capacity for the current flows. However, the Turtle Creek Interceptor and the Woods Run Treatment Plant do not have capacity for the flows generated during wet weather periods. This limitation will be addressed as Alkasan implements its Clean Water Plan." There's another document in the same set of documents from Langen Engineering, which says, "It considers several different alternative methods that could be used. One is an onsite septic system, and it says that that is not consistent with the naming buildings, nor would it be a practical solution to provide adequate service for the site. A second possibility is a packaged wastewater treatment plant with discharge to Sawmo Run, but that's not feasible due to the scope of the proposed development and because the existing topography is prohibitive." So at this point, I'm simply unclear about what the sewage plan is. There was nothing in the sewage, in the set of sewage documents which indicated that there had been any kind of plan approved. I should also point out that Alkasan is under a consent decree. So for example, Alkasan is continuing forward with its Clean Water Plan, which is a blueprint for reducing 7 billion gallons of overflows from flowing into local rivers and streams. So Alkasan isn't even totally free to decide by itself whether or not this addition would be approved because it's being supervised by the federal government and the EPA. Basically, Alkasan is engaging in a multi-year, multi-billion dollar effort to try and come into compliance with the consent decree that it has consented to. And so I'm, this is more of a question, I'm just unclear about what ultimately the plan is to deal with the sewage that is going to be generated by this project. I don't see anything in the documents that have been submitted which would explain what that is to us. And part of what Alkasan is supposed to be doing is demonstrating a willingness to consider the use of green infrastructure and other flow reduction projects in lieu of gray infrastructure, where it can be shown to be as impactful in reducing overflows. So I would ask again, what is the, what is the sort of green way of dealing with the sewage problem, which is something that is supposed to be a top priority for Alkasan in implementing their consent decree? So in conclusion, I just wanted to say, the Langen Engineering Reports generally argue that they're being conservative. That is, that they're sort of giving worst-case scenarios. I don't, I think that is clearly not the case for the traffic, for the noise, for the vibrations. All of those, because they haven't actually given worst case, and because they have not associated any uncertainty with it, and they have not associated any range of values with what they have estimated, and because they have not associated any probabilities with that, we actually have a great deal of uncertainty about the effects of the project. And that uncertainty is enough to show that, as a matter of fact, they have failed to prove that the Churchill Creek Project satisfies the zoning code. And hence, that is sufficient grounds for the council to reject the Churchill Creek proposal. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Spurty. If you go ahead and unshare or?
If I can find my Zoom screen, I will.
Take your time.
Too many there. I can stop sharing. Okay, there.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, so we will have an opportunity now for a cross-examination of Mr. Spurty's. We will start with the applicant, Mr. Metz and Mr. Gallagher. Do you have any questions for Mr. Spurty?
Just a few. Mr. Spurty, are you a meteorologist?
No.
Okay. Are you a professional engineer?
No.
Are you a traffic engineer?
No.
Okay. Are you a licensed noise consultant?
No.
We have no further questions.
I do not believe that anything I have testified to requires any of those certifications.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spurty. Mr. Gallagher. Any party objectors with questions for Mr. Spurty? Any Borough Council members with questions for Mr. Spurty? Mr. Spurty, you've blown them all away. They have nothing left to ask you. Thank you very much for your testimony. We will, I guess, move on to the next person on our list. Alex, looks to me like we had tried to get Odette Ransom, I believe maybe at the last hearing on the 24th. Do we have Ms. Ransom with us tonight? Do you know?
If she's in the room, would she please raise her hand? Then we can promote her to a panelist. And if not, Dr. Starrett, you would be next.
We'll give it just another 15 or 20 seconds here. We do want to try to stay in the same order that we've put out there, if possible.
Hey Gavin.
Yes.
Just for the record, we currently have 105 total participants, 21 panelists, and 84 attendees. I don't know if we've said that tonight.
We did say it early on, but thank you for the update, Mr. Castileia, because that number has changed a bit.
And there's about a half dozen on Facebook that are watching live.
Okay, well, I do not see Ms. Ransom. Certainly, if Ms. Ransom does end up appearing, please identify yourself, raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you. Dr. Starrett?
Yeah, so Gavin, after, after Dr. Starrett, we would have Ralph Waller, and possibly tonight, we might get Anthony Wilson. I do know our last speaker this evening already informed me that they were unavailable, Elizabeth Casman. So even if we made it that far, you know, I told her we would accommodate her at the next hearing.
Okay, right, which again, we anticipate to be next Tuesday, but we will make that formal announcement at the end. So we will bring up Dr. Starrett to present her case now.
Okay, I may have to switch off my dog babysitting responsibilities. Okay. All right, I'm going to share my screen.
Gavin, do we need to swear this witness in or not?
Dr. Starrett, were you sworn in earlier?
At another day.
Okay, you're still sworn in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it was day three. Okay.
Great.
Excuse me a second. Well, I'll just let the, all right. First of all, my name is Susan G. Starrett. I reside at 1903 Hampstead Drive. I don't think my background is relevant to my testimony. I'm not testifying as an expert witness, but just to give it, I have degrees in engineering, master's degree in mathematics, a master's degree in philosophy, and a PhD in philosophy. I've been elected a fellow of the American Association of the Advancement of Science for my work on models. And I've also been elected to, or a fellow, a full member, I'm sorry, a full member of CignaSci. But I'm really just speaking to Borough Council tonight. I know Borough Council is the one who makes the decision. I think they sort of know me. They know I've spent a lot of time on this application, and that's really how I'm speaking tonight, continuing that sort of role as a resident who's been following this application and making comments. And now I'm going to present a case for why they should reject this. Can you see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so I have two main points to make to council. The first one is, it is true that how we got here seems to indicate an unstoppable trajectory, and yet you can say no. And the second point is that the Churchill Creek Project, that is the subject of the applicant's submittal for a conditional use permit, has not been shown to be compliant with the zoning code. That's what I'll argue, and then I'll argue that you should say no. So the two main points, when I say that seems to indicate an unstoppable trajectory, I meant that the text amendment has passed. That was passed in November. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve, and Gateway's approval of engineering studies, these all look like a trajectory that's well on its way. But I'll show or argue that none of the things above should be taken as indications that the applicant's submittal complies with the code. That is, you can still say no. And then, after I'm done with that, I'll argue that the applicant has put forth a case for being entitled to a conditional use permit, and I'll analyze that argument. And I'll show that that case does not, in fact, show that it's, the applicant satisfies the zoning code, and therefore that you should say no. Now, brief elaborations on the first main point. The text amendment passed, but there's also the rest of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission recommendation to approve, I attended that. And I can say, because I've looked very carefully at the transcript many times, I viewed the Planning Commission meeting, and they didn't actually go item by item through the zoning code provisions. So that is why I say that in itself, the Planning Commission recommendation shouldn't be taken to indicate that the application does meet the zoning ordinance. And then third, the third thing that seems to be making a strong case is that Gateway approved the engineering studies. And I just want to point out something I've already made at a council meeting. Gateway recommends conditional approval of the engineering studies. And so there's some loose ends that need to be closed, promises to do something in the future. I just want to point out, because some people seem to think this, it's not appropriate to regard promises that they're going to do something as conditions of the permit. The conditional approval of the impact studies contain caveats that are at risk for not being fulfilled, such as the sanitary sewage you've heard about from Peter Spurty's, the retaining wall in the path of the floodway, which Elizabeth Casman brought that up at this, when Carly Davis presented the stormwater system. You have to excuse me a second, very briefly.
Okay, no problem.
I'll continue. There may be sounds from dogs. Okay, thus, none of the things above should be taken as indications that the applicant's submittal complies with the code. Now, so finishing the elaboration on the first main point, even if none of the things above that seem to indicate an unstoppable trajectory towards granting the conditional use permit should have happened, they did happen. And I'm not going to challenge those things here. That's not what we're here for. What I'm going to do is focus on the fact that even so, the zoning code, or sometimes referred to as the ordinance in this public hearing, gives the council the power to deny the permit. So again, this is just the two main points. You can say no, you should say no. Now, I'm going to address point two. So when I say the project is not compliant with the zoning code, and thus you should say no, my point is not consistent with the applicant's claim made in this hearing. The applicant's representative, and here I'm thinking of Leif Metz presented the case, has presented a case concluding that Churchill Creek Project meets, quote, "the ordinance." I will now examine the applicant's argument. What is the applicant's argument as presented in this public hearing? The main point of this public hearing, just to review, is for Borough Council to act in its quasi-judicial role to judge whether a permit ought to be granted for a proposal by Churchill Creek to construct a distribution center at 1310 Beulah Road. And the applicant's conclusion that the applicant is entitled to the permit it is requesting relies on the claim that it's entitled to the permit if it meets, quote, "seven tests." Now, I just want to say there's an open question here. The question is, are these two things the same? On the left, I have the quote from the borough solicitor in this public hearing. I'm using what's in this public hearing. What he said was the criteria. Ultimately, it's council's decision or council's role to determine whether or not the applicant has established compliance with the zoning code. And so, and if so, the applicant is entitled to approval. If council determines that the applicant has not met the criteria in the zoning code for conditional use approval, then it is council's role to deny that application. Those are quotes from this public hearing. Now, the applicant's representative said something, and I'd like you to compare, members of the Borough Council, whether you think these two are the same. The Borough zoning code, said the applicant's representative, permits a distribution center to be constructed in the C1 zone as a conditional use. And so, the zoning code sets forth seven tests that the applicant has to satisfy to be entitled to this use as a distribution center. Entitled, okay? So, right now, I'm going to examine that question. Are these two things the same? We don't know yet. Now, I think it's fair to, I want to give the context. I really believe people ought to give full quotes, so I just want to give the seven tests in context. And here's from the CART captioning, which I think is basically correct. And the borough, I'm going to quote, and this is from, it's page 35 for the record. I'm sorry, I should have been telling you the, all the, all the things I'm citing. So this is the CART captioning for July 19th, 2021. That was the first day, I think. And it's page 35 of the CART captioning. And the Borough zoning code, and this is Leif Metz speaking, and the Borough zoning code permits a distribution center to be constructed in the C1 zone as a conditional use. And so, the zoning code sets forth seven tests that the applicant has to satisfy to be entitled to this use as a distribution center. So what we'll do during the course of the hearing is that we intend to demonstrate how we satisfy each one of those seven tests that will be done primarily through the testimony and reports that we're submitting. These reports were prepared by our professional engineers. And then he goes on. This is actually on page 37 of the CART captioning of July 19th. And here, I actually went to the actual video to make sure that I got the words exactly right. And I have a screenshot of it there, but I think it's easy enough to find. It's the Borough Churchill Public Hearing, day one, part one. Okay, and, and I guess I have the timestamp there if you look at the picture. But, and so we will conclude at the end of the hearing with our respectful request that Borough Council approve the conditional use on the basis of the approved engineering studies showing that we satisfy all of the tests in the ordinance. So just to paraphrase, the reasoning that was given for why council should approve is that the zoning code sets for seven tests, and that on the basis of the approved engineering studies, showing that we satisfy all the tests. But what's meant by the seven tests? What does the ordinance refer to here? Now, if we go to the borough website that talks about this conditional use application, we find the following. And this is from churchillborough.com. I think it's been on for a long time, but I took this, I just noted down when I actually copied it. It was the 24th of August. I'm going to read it. "In the fall of 2020, the Churchill Borough Council enacted Ordinance 755 Amending the Zoning Ordinance of Churchill, Chapter 304. This ordinance permits distribution centers as a conditional use in the C1 zoning district. Conditional uses are reserved for those land uses that will have a significant impact on the zoning district or the whole community, or for those uses that necessitate additional safeguards. This strenuous process of the conditional use permit and land development applications imposed on the applicant and property owner are in place to protect the health and safety of the community. If the applicant demonstrates satisfactory compliance with our codes and various other review agencies, then they will be granted approval with conditions and agreements in place, seeking the fullest compliance with agreed-to conditions." Now, what does the zoning ordinance, so a key thing is the zoning ordinance of Churchill, of Churchill, Chapter 304. Well, if you go to the actual ordinance on the borough website, I want to explain for the record what I'm displaying. I'm displaying what you see when you go to the borough website and you look for, you look for general legislative, yeah, slash zoning. That's 304. On the right hand, I have Article 5 conditional uses, and I've included all the things that are under it. And I've ticked off the following, of course, 304-37.1 Distribution Center. But then I've also ticked off 304-31 Criteria for Approval, 304-30 Reviews, 304-29 Application Comments Contents, and 304-29 Generals, oh, I didn't, wouldn't need to do that, Use is Not Listed. Okay, then I also have Article 4 General Regulations. And the ones I picked to note here are 304-23 Performance Standards, 304-24 Site Plan Review, 304-25 Site Development Standards, and 304-26 Environmental Protection Requirements, and 304-27 Woodlands, Wetlands, and Steep Slope Protection. So now we go back and revisit this question. So we see now that what I've shown here now, I've actually expanded the section 304-37.1 Distribution Center. And you can't read the details, but you can see that it has items A through I. And so the section on distribution centers permitted as a conditional use actually refers to other sections of the code itself. And I noticed especially item A under 304-37.1. So this is in the section on distribution centers itself. And it says, "A distribution center is permitted as a conditional use only in the C1 and C2 commercial districts where the applicant can establish compliance with the criteria contained in this section, which is 304-37.1, and the general criteria set forth in 304-31." So this says, within the section on distribution centers itself, that as a conditional use in C1, it has to meet both, all the items listed under 304-37.1. That starts with A, A through I, and two, the general criteria in 304-31. So A through I is more than seven, so what are the seven tests? I'm going to give what I think is a reasonable, of course, I can be cross-examined, and if this isn't what was meant, I can be corrected. But I'm, I think it's quite clear that the seven tests that are meant here are items B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. C is the height requirement, and then that leaves, that leaves six more, so that altogether, that's seven. So suppose an applicant regarded these three, not including A, and not including I, and regarded them as the seven tests, which if met, entitles the applicant to a permit. Now, let's revisit the question. Are these two things the same? "A distribution center is permitted," on the left-hand side, I have the quote, "A distribution center is permitted as a conditional use only in C1 and C2 commercial districts where the applicant can establish compliance with the criteria contained in this section." This is reading from 304- This is reading from three oh four dash thirty-seven point one, the part of the code on distribution centers as a conditional use, and the general criteria set forth in three oh four dash thirty-one. Does that turn out? Maybe it turns out. Does that turn out to be the same as the seven tests interpreted as items B, C, D, E, F, G, and H under section three oh four dash thirty-seven point one? Let's see. Well, what does three oh four dash thirty-one, which the applicant must also show compliance with, require? Now, I have it here. You can't quite read it, although I'm sure you can look it up. So, I'm going to spell out the ones that I want to draw attention to. Besides item B, which does require meeting all the items listed specifically for a distribution center, there are other items. So, B says a proposed use shall meet all special standards which may apply to its class of conditional use as set forth in this article. So, in this case, it would be as set forth for distribution centers. Now, also that there's other things under, here I'm reading from three oh four dash thirty-one criteria for approval, which is under Article five conditional uses. Notice especially item C and items G and H too. So, I'm going to expand these, so you don't have to squint. Item C under section three oh four dash thirty-one, which, as I said, the section on distribution centers as a conditional use, three oh four dash thirty-seven point one refers to, and says an application for a distribution center must also meet, says this. "The proposed use shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or persons, persons, and shall comply with the performance standards of three oh four dash twenty-three." So, I want to draw attention to any other persons. And then to finish what I was laying out, items G and H under three oh four dash thirty-one, which the section on distribution centers as a conditional use refers to, and says an application for a distribution center must also meet. G, "The proposed use shall promote the objectives of this chapter and shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan." H, "The proposed use shall be consistent with past development of the borough and its current character." Now, I'm not going to go into this, but a lot of other people have quoted from three oh four dash twenty-three performance standards. And so, I'll just note that three oh four dash twenty-three performance standards must also be met, and that's per three oh four dash thirty-one item C, which in turn must be met per three oh four dash thirty-seven point one. So, now we go back. We have enough to answer the question. Are these two things the same? And I propose to you, Borough Council members, that the answer is no. A distribution center is permitted as a conditional use only in C1 and C2 commercial districts where the applicant can establish compliance with the criteria contained in this section thirty-seven point one and the general in three oh four dash thirty-one is not the same as the seven tests interpreted as items B through H. Now, why do I say that? I'm hoping you can fill in the gaps yourself, but I'll spell it out. Why the answer is no, it's not merely a superficial point. For example, if we ask, does a traffic study show that the requirement of three oh four dash thirty-one item C is met? We can see that the answer to that is no. The requirement as explained above in three oh four dash thirty-one item C is, "The proposed use shall not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other persons." Now, you've seen this a lot of times, but there's a buffer map that Gateway has put together, and that's what I'm displaying now. And I've given where it's located on the Borough website on my slide. But that's what it's called, the property buffer map. Now, I do do a close-up, and this is something I produced myself and by marking it up. So, I want to point out that the loading docks and trucks are very close to where the schools and sports field are. I mean, they're, I don't mean close in distance. I mean, you can see they're located about the same, you know, sort of, should I say, distance from, what should I say there? As straight a line as you could draw if you were going to pick a point on the site of where you'd put the loading docks. This would minimize the distance between the loading docks and the schools and sports field. And now I want to zero in. Other people have already noted this, but I'm sorry, I made these slides up before I heard them speak. I have gone through my slides and tried to take out a lot of things other people have said, but I'm going to stick with this because I've prepared it. So, the impacts of the new truck entrance, if we look at that, this is Site Driveway B for the eighteen-wheeler truck use. And I think this picture shows how really close the trucks are going to be. I know other people have done this. I'm sorry, I'm just going to go through what I have, to the school and to the houses there. What I'm bringing up for is not because I'm, want to say the same thing again. What I want to do is I want to use it to test this question that I've raised. Is, are these two things different? And I'm arguing that, yes, they are different, and you can see it by looking at a case like this. So, the significance of Hillwood's proposed use of, or the applicant's, sorry, proposed use of Site Driveway B for heavy truck traffic. Now, many people have said to us, or to me, and some friends of mine, that, look, the inclusion of a distribution center in Zone C, once you pass that text amendment, you have to allow it. The only question is what conditions? And I want to push back against that. And I want to point out that the inclusion of a distribution center in Zone Z one does not carry with it necessarily the expectation that the currently gated site entrance be on Greensburg Pike, which I'll show, formerly used only several hours per day for employees entering and exiting the site during rush hours. That's the most it was used before, would become used for heavy truck traffic at all hours of the day, seven days a week. One could always also raise this against the requirement that the use be consistent with the pass, but I'm not going to do that right now. Therefore, harms to safety, health, and welfare of the residents and school students arising specifically from the proposed use of Site Driveway B for heavy truck traffic are a valid basis for denying Hillwood's conditional use permit. And the reason I say that is because three oh four dash thirty-one must be met in addition to those seven items, B through I under three oh four dash thirty-seven one. Now, why do I say that it's a violation in spite of the fact that these studies have been approved? Well, we look at who else besides schools is on Site Driveway B, and there's a letter from Sandra Clifford, who lives there. I know other people have mentioned her. I'll just read the letter for the record. "My name is Sandra Clifford, and my brother and I own the property at twenty-five oh one Greensburg Pike, next to the road that goes into the old Westinghouse property. When our parents bought our home in nineteen sixty-one, sixty years ago, Greensburg Pike was a two-lane road without sidewalks, and Westinghouse was a nice and accommodating neighbor. We have an easement to use the road to access our driveway. Westinghouse had a gate and guardhouse protecting access to their property. The guard would open the gate in the AM for one and a half hours to allow employees to enter and open the gate again in the PM for one and a half hours to permit employees to exit Monday through Friday. When we needed to use the road, the guard would step out immediately and stop the one-way traffic and allow us to exit or enter the driveway to our property." They say Amazon, yeah, I suppose if Amazon's been already designated as the end user, "now plans to use its road twenty-four seven for hundreds of tractor-trailer trucks to exit their property daily. Because our home sits approximately thirty-five feet from the road, we will be continuously exposed to traffic, pollution, and noise seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year." Now, here, we see the impact on a person or persons. Why is, why is that? Why, why didn't the fact that the seven tests were passed according to the applicant rule this out? Well, I think it's because here we're talking about impact on persons. I'm not sure, but that's what I point out. The impact on persons matters according to three oh four dash thirty-one. I don't know what to say about three oh four dash thirty-seven point one, but I know that the applicant has to meet three oh four dash thirty-one. And it's clear that this violates three oh four dash thirty-one. Just to show, I went on Google Street View and took a picture so we could really see what's happening. This is the home. Their driveway actually comes out here, if you can see it, onto the old driveway into Westinghouse. So, you can see that they'll be very impacted. She's drawn a picture of where the proposed sound barrier is going to be. And if you can imagine that here, you can see how it will change things for those people. Now, what's the issue here? That nothing should ever change? Well, no. Thinking that that's what the residents' complaint is doesn't take it seriously. So, it's not simply, I've been here sixty years, you can't do something I'm not used to. That's not really the complaint. Rather, the issue is the credibility that council should attach to claims presented in this public hearing, such as a statement that there will be no material detrimental impact on the community. But that was made by Chris Prisk in response to a question from Leif Metz. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact point in the, it was at the end of Chris's testimony. I believe it was the very first day, day one. Now, clearly, if Chris Prisk, or maybe I should just say the applicant's witness, meant no material detrimental impact on any person, the judgment would be ludicrous. So, I'm not going to claim that he said that. I'm going to use the principle of charity, and let us assume that he did not mean that there won't be any material detrimental impact on any person, he said, on the community. Because if he said that, clearly, that would contradict Sandra Clifford's letter. But suppose we give him, you know, those charitable interpretation. Compliance with the zoning code three oh four dash thirty-one does speak of requirements on any person. I've read it several times. "Proposed use should not involve any element or cause any condition that may be dangerous, injurious, or noxious to any other property or persons." So, I think that, I think it's clear that the kinds of things that the Cliffords are going to experience would count as material detrimental impacts on them as persons under anyone's understanding of the language here. So, I would conclude that a charitable interpretation of what the applicant's witness, Chris Prisk, of Langen Engineering stated in terms of the community is that his statement really didn't intend to claim that there wouldn't be any impact material, impact on any person, or material detrimental on any person. But it was an interpretation that was meant to address the test as he understood it, as he interpreted in three oh four dash thirty-seven point one. So, if my reasoning is correct, I think we can conclude that the case presented by the applicant's representative at this public hearing does not actually establish compliance with the zoning code. Thus, that impact studies are not sufficient to show compliance to the codes, even ones that are approved by the Borough Engineer. And in general, presenting the fact that the Borough Engineer has approved certain, he called them engineering studies. I think of them as impact studies. Because as an engineer, I wouldn't recognize this as an engineering study, but I said I wouldn't testify as an expert witness, so let me take that back and just say they were called engineering studies. I call them impact studies. As evidence, that's what they're called in three oh four dash thirty-seven point one, impact studies. As evidence that the seven tests Leif Metz referred to are satisfied, does not establish compliance to the Borough zoning code. The seven tests approach is what the applicant has made its case upon, which is not sufficient to show compliance to the Borough zoning code. Now, is this a special case? You know, could they solve it by just buying that house? Violations of three oh four dash thirty-one C are not hard to find. Sandra Clifford's situation is but one of many examples of violations of three oh four dash thirty-one C. Other examples of this form, drawing from earlier testimony in this hearing, the lighting study does not include the impact of lights from the trucks. But the proposed use does include trucks or cause trucks, and it is the cause of the truck trips. Now, maybe that really didn't, wasn't required to be considered under thirty-seven point one. Suppose I grant that. Well, it still has to be considered under three oh four dash thirty-one. And many of the truck trips are after dark, on or at, on or near residential streets. And during times, people are trying to retire for the day and get to sleep. Lights and noise from tractor-trailers passing by many times per hour, every hour, is injurious to many people as it can affect their health. And I didn't know that Rose Salata was going to testify tonight, or even what she was going to say. But I would just refer to her testimony to support that. Now, how do we know that it wasn't included in the study? Well, that was testified to earlier in this hearing. In cross-examination of, I think it was Ryan Parise, and I give the CART captioning here of the July twenty-second public hearing, pages twenty-five and twenty-six of the PDF. Sandra Fox is the questioner. She says, "Okay, I'm wondering if you factored into your study the impact of the lights from the trucks entering and exiting the site, as well as employee vehicles." He replies, "That's not something that is part of the lighting study." She asks, "Do you think that would be significant in terms of the amount of light that residents would, or people driving by would see?" I can't answer that. I can only testify to the lighting study. Okay, so we can see this difference between what thirty-seven point one, as interpreted by the applicant, requires, and what I think common sense and requires in three oh four dash thirty-one. Other examples of this form, I won't do them all, but I'm going to do a handful, drawing from earlier testimony in this hearing. Mr. McDonald provided this photo earlier in the hearing, and I have the reference for it on the slide to illustrate the proximity of the homes to where the trucks will actually be. The impact, reading from the left-hand side of my slide, the impact on those living on the residential roads that will experience thousands more eighteen-wheeler trucks going by their home every week. And some people, I understand, are going to lose a place for people visiting them to park in front of their home, which they've come to rely on for family gatherings on the weekend, or when a workman comes to their house to work on something. So, what I conclude from this example is that perhaps impact on residents who live in these homes does not translate to material detrimental impact to the community in Mr. Prisk's professional opinion, or in his traffic models. And I'm not going to question him on that. But then, what I will raise the question for council is, then what does that say about the protocols for these models, or for those professional opinions? And I say that not in any derogatory way, but in a way of what does it mean for the zoning code? Meeting the zoning code. Other examples of this form, drawing from earlier testimony in this hearing, the impact on students and staff at Pace School in the Woodland Hills Junior-Senior High School and sports field that are right along Greensburg Pike at what will become a truck exit. And here, I actually put these all together and show that you can see that the distance between the school and sport fields and the loading dock and trucks is about as short as it could be, considering where it's placed. And to show how close it is, that it just really comes out right smack in the middle of, between the school and the sports field. And I ask you to recall the testimony on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, from Ruthie Ray, Dr. Deborah Gentile, Sandra Fox, and Cynthia Underwood regarding diesel emissions and asthma. Dr. Gentile's research studied a population where half of the people enrolled in the study were located in the Woodland Hills School District. Other examples of this form, drawing from earlier testimony in the hearing, people going for walks in Churchill. And here, I kind of live under this yellow thing that says people and dogs take daily walks here. That's about where I live and where Sandy Fox lived, but it really doesn't matter. I think you can see that the loading docks are at a place where diesel emissions are bound to be experienced. Whether they're considered noticeable or not by a professional is a different question. Other examples of this form, drawing from earlier testimony in this hearing, the impact on surrounding residents of particulates and other emissions due to demolition and construction activities. I actually brought this up, I think, the very first time that Hillwood presented at council. So, from the third day of the public hearing, cross-examination of the applicant's So from the third day of the public hearing, cross examination of the applicant's expert witness. Established that impact on air quality was limited in scope in his study. The study did not include impacts on air quality from the stockpiles of ground up demolished concrete and asphalt. And it didn't even quantify them or mention them in any way. The expert said that that wasn't part of his study. So also the expert witness established that the air quality report used the data from the traffic report. And that he did not independently determine truck trips and paths. That were selected for the purpose of determining air quality impact. And I'll just make an aside here that. I think you don't have to be somebody who studies models like I am, but I think it's common sense that different models. You would choose your inputs differently depending on what it is you're trying to be conservative about.
Dr. Stare, before you move on to the next slide, I apologize for interrupting. It's not, it's nothing to do with the, these slides, but we are coming down to about the last. Two minutes of tonight's hearing. So I apologize, we're gonna have to cut you off and finish you up next week.
That's fine.
So where we are then folks is we do have, we're gonna allow Dr. Stare. To finish her testimony at the next hearing. Dr. Stare will be followed by Ralph Waller. If we do hear from Ms. Ode at ransom. We will slide her in there at some point, but we have Dr. Stare, Ralph Waller. Anthony Wilson, Diana Yankis, Chris McMullin. And Elizabeth Casman. And the intention will be to complete. The remaining unrepresented party objector testimony. At the next hearing, which will be held at six PM. On Tuesday, August thirty first. Is that correct, Alex and Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Okay, great. Same Zoom format as you all become accustomed to. And you know, at that point, hopefully we're able to wrap up and we don't need to necessarily stay till eleven o'clock, but if we need to, we will. And then we will try to map out a schedule of the remaining hearings. So with that said, unless there are any other housekeeping items before we close tonight. We'll pick up Ms. Stare at six PM on Tuesday, August thirty first.
Thank you.
We have a question everybody from the councils chambers.
Hold on one second, folks, sorry.
Never mind.
Okay, never mind. All right. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Everyone.
Good night.